This council meeting is called in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting on August 1st, 2022 was included in the list of meetings published in the Curry News and Star Ledger. A notice of this meeting was also placed on the bulletin board at our hall. In addition, a copy of this notice is available to the public when copy of this statement shall be included in the minutes of this meeting. Mayor Dennis Sullivan.
Here.
Council members. Ramble Brady.
Here.
Tom Mitchell.
Here.
Gina Stravick.
Here.
Roger Vroom.
Here.
Fred Weed.
Here.
Randy Pitts.
Here.
The Speaker of the House will be in main standing. I would like to introduce the Speaker of the House, Senator Sanders, and Senator Bubba, who stands one nation under God, in the visible with everything that has us for all. Before we start, I'd like to acknowledge several veterans from our community who have loved this. First individual, Mr. Terrence Owens, was a Marine Corps Vietnam War era veteran, ever post 12 for over 50 years. Second gentleman, Charles Allard Jr., was in the U.S. Army, and after leaving the Army, he worked for Metro North Railroad for over 40 years. Had the pleasure of teaching his grandson in my tenure in the school system, Army veteran Mr. Allard. And the third gentleman, Starros Bouziotis. The Bouziotis family is well-known to people in town. Starros' son George has been very active in our fire department and many community events. Mr. Bouziotis was in the U.S. Army, heavy artillery. I thought of my dad when I attended Starros's wake yesterday. I'm sure they're up in heaven swapping artillery stories as we speak. He did two tours in Germany, World War II. Fourth individual, sudden tragic loss, Doreen Ballon, wife of our deputy fire chief, David Ballon, just passed away in the last day or two. Just a great woman, a great family, just a big loss. So three veterans, a contributing member of our community, Mr. Owens, Mr. Allard, Mr. Bouziotis, and Mrs. Ballon. We have minutes from July 18th, and I have a motion. So, second. Council members. Ramble Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
We have one departmental report, national light out tomorrow night. It's well-publicized on our website. Weather looks to be good. Encourage the community to come out and meet your friends and neighbors, meet our borough contributors, just have a nice, fun night at Carroll Page Park, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Dump tank, I understand, is operational?
Absolutely. I will be one of the people to be dumped, so if you have a beef with me, by all means, get your pitching on ready.
If you missed your chance last year, then he's back for another one. Committee reports, I'll start to my work. Dr. Brady.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Pleased to report that the New Jersey Department of Corrections has approved the jail in the new emergency services complex. You might ask, is there a jail there? Oh, yeah, it's a holding room. But all jails and such facilities, in such facilities, have to be approved by the state of New Jersey. They were very kind and gracious to approve us, and that's just another step toward completion of our emergency services complex. To go further, we have received about 95% of the architectural drawings and plans for the project. That's a 95% topless level, and we're pretty much ready to start moving forward with the construction of the new facility. And if you've been down to the corner of Gaston Avenue and Cliff Street, you'll notice those really beautiful flowers that were there, and the leaves have all been taken down with empty locks. And next, we're going to consider a company to assist us with the FFM, for those who are not efficient with that term, is furniture, fixtures, and equipment, because once we get the building, we have to put something in it, and that's what we have to work on next. And finally, you may have heard some stories that the state of New Jersey is considering a 24% increase in the health insurance for state employees and, of course, for taxpayers. Now, 24% does seem to be a bit much. I asked Paige to give me the 2021 figures for health insurance, and I extrapolated it, and quite honestly, I'm not usually shocked by very much. But if you have any contact with legislators, governors, or anyone else in influence, please ensure them that small towns like Somerville can't afford a 24% increase in health benefits, because we not only pay it as taxpayers, but the employees also pay it. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. How's your struggle?
On behalf of the Environmental Commission, I will share with their latest news. The community garden is thriving. Everything's green, they're keeping it watered, new addition, our shed is up, and it's a good start to a great project. The other thing that we did this month was a walk through Chambres Park with a representative from the New Jersey Tree Foundation. We'll receive a grant for MetLife and volunteer support to plant approximately 32 trees at Chambres Park along the Greenway. So that's, hopefully we'll get rain and be able to do that this fall. We're planting later in fall. And that's another reminder is to water your trees, especially if you were a recipient of street trees last year. The young trees do need to be watered, and best early morning or late night. And lastly, if you are interested in a street tree for your property, we are going to be putting trees in again this fall. It's a left number, but any resident that wants a tree should contact the Environmental Commission through their Facebook page, or call here and we'll give them this.
Thank you. Councilman Mitchell.
Yes, we're, the Historic Advisory Committee is preparing a proposed historic element for the master plan, and is now being reviewed by planner Mike Holden. The State Historic Preservation Office sent a representative to look at the Daniel Robert House, otherwise known as our Borough Hall. He seemed impressed and pleased by the restoration work that he's been doing down. There is a proposal to put a cell phone facility on the roof of the Nimitor Towers on East Payne Street. Minor, minor changes appear. A Native American festival is planned November 5th on Division Street. There will be artists, drummers, dancers, and more. One of the trees of Borough Hall died, and the Historic Advisory Committee would like to replace it with a smaller or middle tree. Hopefully, the Environmental Commission can look at the requirements and see what would be suitable. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Norton.
I have nothing.
Mr. President.
What do you have?
Oh.
Sorry.
My mistake.
Mr. Weed.
Um.
Council.
Um, just to say something what Councilwoman Stravick had mentioned about Chambres Park, that is part of the, just a small cog in the big restoration, thanks to Congressman Tom Alanowski, who secured us $2.5 million to rehab that park. You know, I just want to send out a thanks there, and that'll be coming up soon. I want to also mention that Family Pride Night, which was rescheduled from late June, has been rescheduled to August 14th, 6:00 PM on Division Street, so one come all. It's a very fun event. We had it last year, and we hope to make it a yearly, yearly program for LGBTQ community. Very important. And then the Mercer Street Basketball Court that was damaged during the flood, the work should be starting soon, believe in the next couple of weeks, right?
Yes.
Yes, so that is all I have to report.
Mr. President. Now, thank you, Your Honor. Downtown Somerville committee reports. Downtown Somerville has been teeming with excitement this season. Streets are filled with family, fun, music, and more. Free concerts and movies on Division Street are well underway. I invite everyone to complement your shopping and dining plans every Thursday, Friday, and Saturday evening with one of our unique downtown Somerville experiences. Friday Cruise Night continues every Friday through Labor Day, free summer stage concerts on Division Street, or every Saturday night through October. Thursday nights, this Thursday night, for movie night, you can catch Jumanji. Also, make sure to mark your calendars for the Artisan Market this Sunday, August 7th. And finally, be on the lookout, September 11th, for the Central Jersey Jazz Festival taking place this year. And not downtown, but at Carroll Page Park. Just another day, Somerville's second annual kickball tournament was held this past Saturday with hundreds attending. At Exchange Field, Saw Team Bill Luminati, headed by team captain Eric Power from Somerville, take home the top trophy. Congratulations to Eric and the team, and Mark Haines Jackson for putting this event together, walking here.
Thank you. The other report I have tonight is summer scams. We've got a notice from the utility company, PSE&amp;G, the other day to warn the public about scams. It's not restricted to public service. There have been scams from Social Security, scams from IRS, scams from banks. Please, folks, use your good common sense. Do not share credit card information, do not share bank account information, especially do not share your social security number with anyone on the phone. IRS does not make home laws. If IRS wants to find you, they'll send you a little envelope with a window in it, and everything is done and right. Please, please, please. We're a trusting society, and unfortunately, that, that trust is misused on many, many occasions, whether it's a charity, whether it's a bank, whether it's a, you know, we have a solo project that's going to benefit you. Yeah, you want to find a refuge, it will come in the ways to do it. So please, use your judgment. If you're uncomfortable, just hang up. You know, spoke Borough Hall, reported, wrote Police Department, and then we, you know, we can go through channels to, you know, to investigate it, if it's something that we can. Kevin, have you gotten many reports of scams?
I have not, but I did see that notice come out tonight.
I just, you know, again, people are trusting, and these, you know, the scambers catch you off guard, and before you know it, you blurted out something that, car insurance, that's another one. I get those all the time. And just, just be aware, we're all about saving money and stretching our budgets, but if you divulge, you know, sensitive information, it's, it's going to be a problem. So please, folks, use your judgment. When in doubt, just hang up and notify the Borough and PD. We'll, we'll log, and hopefully, you know, they'll, they'll go elsewhere. So please, just, just do that, and, you know, do your call screening if you, if you must, just, just be very, very careful. Again, we're a trustworthy society, but sometimes if something sounds too good to be true, it probably isn't. And that's all I have for tonight. So next on our agenda, Kevin, we have a presentation about the cemetery sewer sale. Later on in the agenda, we have an ordinance for a public hearing and adoption, which will allow the question of the sale of the sewers system to be put on a public referendum. So we'll have more information about that later on. But what we thought we could do tonight is have a presentation from some of our consultants that have helped us in this process, which goes back about a year, Kevin, I would say, when we first talked about the possibility of engaging, you know, putting out bids for the, to see the interest in the sale of our sewer system. And we've met various milestones, and the next milestone tonight is the public hearing and potential adoption of the naval ordinance to let the referendum proceed. So Kevin, I'll turn it over. You can just go ahead and introduce our consultants, and I'll let them give their presentation for the public.
Yes, thank you. The, Ryan Scherbo will be doing our presentation. Brian Morris from Phoenix is here as well, lines with Dakota's. Paige Alster, myself, and John Drakeowitz, who given the set on the team that, that basically engaged on this for, for, so, in the nearly a year. But I'll, Ryan, start it off. And Ryan, you have in front of you a printout of how important it's, the details that Ryan will all.
Sure. And you can certainly make that available on your website.
Sure.
Just give a brief introduction to the level of, of yourself, your firm, and your presentation.
Absolutely. So my name is Ryan Scherbo, I'm with the law firm Dakota's, with the project Coleman Givlin. Worked in water and wastewater since the beginning of my career. 25 years later, I've been a part of at least four municipal sale programs, like the one we're talking about tonight. Last year, worked with, and with Brian, actually, too, worked on the sale of the Downbrook Sewer System. American Water was the purchaser of that system, and also the sale of the Allendale Water Supply System that was purchased by Deol, formerly known as Sewers. This year, worked with Somerville to assist you in your program, and simultaneously worked with Borough South River of Bergen County to sell their water system. In addition to that, I've worked for, I've worked for probably 10, 12 years on private water and wastewater operator contracts, where, let's say, an outside operator comes into a municipal home utility and operates it at a cost pursuant to a contract. The municipality owns the system, responsible for all the costs, which have a private operator conducting all of its services. And also worked on arrangements, shared service arrangements between other communities, where they've explored joint operation of municipal utilities, or cooperation of utilities, all kinds of arrangements in between. What we are talking about tonight, of course, is the referendum question and the ordinance, as the mayor had said. The council is not particularly willing to approve the contract and execute it, but is willing to approve the contract for consideration by the public. A copy of that contract, as I'll go through in the presentation tonight, is available for public inspection, and the public will have an opportunity to view the contract and then vote their viewpoint at the upcoming general election later this fall, if the council approves the ballot question to be drawn.
Just to reiterate, the ordinance is coming up later on for consideration. If the ordinance is adopted, all that does is put the question on the ballot.
That's correct.
It's a public referendum, which means it's a majority of the public voting.
That's correct. And if they vote yes, then the council would be presented with a final contract for execution, which will look substantially like the contract that's involved in the public inspection today. I say substantially, then maybe minor tweaks, but none of the business terms essentially will change from here to there.
Thank you. Proceed.
So we're going to go over a brief agenda, and the agenda is going to include an overview of the RFD process. We're going to talk about the results of the RFD process. RFD is Request for Bids. We're going to talk about the contract development process that follows the request for bids. The, what we will do, when I say we, the Borough, what the Borough will do with the proceeds from this sale, which you're entitled to do with them. What happens if we don't sell the system? Obviously, another consideration that everybody should be advised of. And then also, what are our next steps would be included in this evening's presentation on the ordinance. And then we can open it up, Mayor, to questions now from the council, or you could wait until the public hearing, which I think we're in, so that it's a pleasure. So an overview of the RFD process. As the mayor said, we started about a year ago in preliminary conversations about the request for bids and what other options existed. Kevin formed, the Borough formed a professional team consisting of Brian, myself, Paige, John Drakeowitz, your bond counsel, and also Vito from T and M, engineer and your Borough engineer as well. So we all collectively looked at multiple options. We ultimately decided that based on the options available, it was worth getting the information from the RFD process so that we could present that as an option as well. The council authorized the request for bids via resolution. We went out and put a bid on the street on March 8th, and we received bids on June 22nd. We extended the bidding window. It's a, by statute, it's a six-week bidding window, but the bidders asked for additional time, so we provided a little additional time for them to look at the system and the data that we provided. American Water was the highest bidder at $7 million. There was a second bidder, Aqua New Jersey, it's an entity, another utility, it's mostly in South Jersey, but it does have holdings all over the state in small areas. They bid $3 million for the system. We developed a contract for sale. There was a form contract in the bid document, and the bidders were asked to comment on that contract. I would say American Water's comments were fairly limited, and it's resulted in a fairly smooth discussion over the contract in the last couple of weeks. So the results of the bid, here's in detail what American Water bid. $7 million for the purchase of your system and its assets. $9.5 million to be installed in capital improvements and materials over the next 10 years, following the sale, if it sells. They provided a fixed rate proposal. Every bidder was asked to provide a rate proposal. American Water's rate proposal was for year one and year two, 0% increases from your current rate that you experience. Year three, four, and five consecutively would be 3% increases, and then year six and seven would be 4% increases. After year seven, as a regulated public utility, American Water would be subject to the Board of Public Utilities. So they will submit regular rate cases, you know, something on the order of, you know, every couple of years, they submit a rate case. We can talk about that in a little more detail. But their, their goal, and their stated goal in their bid, is to bring you in line with, eventually with, American Water's rates statewide. And to do that, it will take some time. Rate cases don't include 40, 50% rate increases at the BPU. They don't allow that unless there's some catastrophic event that justifies that. So we'd be looking at a controlled increase over time, structured under a Board of Public Utilities process. We, as a Borough, are permitted to participate in that process. If someone files a rate case, we're allowed to intervene in that rate case and express our viewpoint on rates that are being asked for, why we think they're appropriate or not. American Water offer, also offers something we don't offer, which is a low-income customer assistance program. It's an established program, and, you know, they offer to people of certain income levels who have difficulty affording their utility bills. They have customer service 24/7, 365 days a year. They are subject, again, to regulation by the Board of Public Utilities on how they provide their customer service, emergency response, subject to health, safety, and welfare, and their review by the Board of Public Utilities on those issues. They currently provide potable water service here in the community, and they have done so for many, many years, and they also serve approximately 2-plus million residents in the state of New Jersey for water and sewage, in 190 communities. Once the bid was received, we, as I said, we reviewed American Water's comments to the form contract. We sat down, not only and looked at it as a group on our side, as a Borough scheme, but then we immediately helped Conference Halls of American Water review any unresolved issues between us. You know, we're getting much closer to final product. All the business terms, I will say at this point, are fairly completed and refined. It's more of legalese language in different locations where we are, clogging back and forth, but nothing of any significant nature at this point, from my opinion. We were a member of the SRVSA. So we had looked at our service contract with the SRVSA. It was a major component of our procurement. We talked with SRVSA during the procurement process and since. Our conclusion was that based on the form of the contract, it was written in 1958, so, you know, it didn't contemplate a situation like this, and not surprisingly, it really doesn't include language addressing it. But based on the language that's in that contract, we believe it's our obligation to remain a member of the SRVSA, continue to appoint our membership to that entity. We have structured a relationship with the buyer whereby the obligations that come to us from SRVSA, namely our annual fee, will pass on to the buyer, and the buyer will pass those costs on to the customer, the same way the Borough would have passed those costs on to the customer. In order to ensure that Paige always has the funds available for addressing the costs from the SRVSA, we've asked American Water to pre-fund those costs in the amount of 105% of the estimated costs determined by SRVSA. At the end of the year, there's a true-up process. Sometimes it works in our favor, and we overpay the SRVSA. Sometimes it doesn't work in our favor, and we owe the SRVSA some additional money. So we felt that the 105% would provide sufficient coverage, any other scenario, so that we would be able to address our needs with the SRVSA. John Drakeowitz also looked at this issue and gave his opinion, thought that this was a good approach as well. As I said, a copy of the proposed contract is currently available in the clerk's office for review by the public by appointment, I suppose, right, Kevin?
Yes.
So what can we use the proceeds for? As I mentioned, we're pursuing this process under a statutory process, and that statute specifically states what we're allowed to use the proceeds for. We must use the proceeds for the retirement of bonds and other indebtednesses associated with the wastewater system. However, if there are additional funds left over, we're free to use that for the debt of the Borough, specifically in taxpayer relief. So this is not money that's coming into the Borough, and we can use it to buy new trucks or equipment or buildings. We actually have to use it to retire debt, as the statute requires. So it is anticipated that the proceeds will be utilized to defeat approximately $1.07 million of wastewater system debt, and the remainder will be used to address a portion of the Borough's $16.1 million of debt unrelated to the wastewater system. Obviously, you know, the process is, is a market-dictated process, so even before we issued the bid, we had to be sure we understood what would happen if we didn't receive bids, if we received bids that were unacceptable, if the government body didn't like the suggested approach, or ultimately if the public were to vote no on the recommended approach by the professionals. So the Borough examined the situation and has determined that they would obviously have their ongoing expenses related to operation and maintenance of the wastewater system that would continue. Those costs are, are known and established in our budget. We also have an ongoing issue with the 27-inch line that feeds the, the main line of the SRVSA. The council's familiar with this, most members, this councilwoman, but most members of the council are familiar with this because they have to deal with a memorandum of understanding, administrative consent, or rather, with the DEP that asks us to look at that line and other areas of the system, and make sure that we're eliminating inflow and infiltration, extraneous rainwater and inflow into our wastewater system, which at times can be difficult for the SRVSA to deal with. It's not worth going into the details about that issue, but nonetheless, the 27-inch line has been the focus of not only the Borough, but the SRVSA for quite some time. We have an actual standing agreement with them that we will try to control the flow within that line. So if this didn't go through, we'd have to immediately turn our efforts to that line, start addressing any kinds of issues or concerns we feel are arising from that facility. Kevin and T and M actually issued some bids right before the, our bid was in, so we know for a fact what some of the costs associated with inspecting and televising that 27-inch line might be. If that line were televised and inspected, and some other issue was found, we'd have to repair that as well. So that would be an additional cost. We would also be facing costs associated with continuous track-down of infiltration and infill throughout our community. It's something that would be in our interest, let's say, to eliminate it, because it addresses our quota, SRVSA. It's in SRVSA's interest because it ensures that there's capacity in the system, and they're not trading storm water as opposed to wastewater. We would also have to look at hiring new and additional staff with the DPW. As a result of this program, if it is approved, there are no jobs eliminated, just our DPW staff gets to focus on other items associated with the DPW. If we keep the system, we need to ramp up our efforts with regard to the system, and that would require new and additional staff. And of course, the Borough suffered significant losses in recent storm events, and as a result of that, we really do not have the equipment that we used to have. So we immediately have to start down that process of acquiring the correct equipment and properly maintaining our system long-term. I will point out that one of American Water's items in their bid included the purchase of a large DP truck for our system, so they would be using that within our system. As far as next steps go, I've put together a small chart here. Obviously, tonight is the second reading of the ordinance for the public referendum. Obviously tonight is the second reading of the ordinance for the public referendum question. After that, if the council and the governing body were to approve that ordinance this evening, we would submit the draft question to the clerk, to the county, get that approval from them to get on the ballot and get to view where that's placed on the ballot, how it's placed on the ballot so the public can see all of that information. Many of you have probably seen ballot questions where the question's on one page and the answer's on the back. And sometimes things get overlooked. So we don't want anything like that to happen. We want to get it to the clerk as early as we can and try to work out the business of that. We would then initiate with assistance of American Water a public education campaign. We would probably be at a lot of council meetings trying to talk about the transaction and the referendum question. We would be out in the public at various events. American Water, seeing their, their ability to carry out an education campaign in Bound Brook. You know, it's, it's quite impressive and very well disseminated information, good information. You know, and they do take their time to answer public questions wherever they come up. So we would stay on top of that right up through the election. And then, of course, the voters will be presented with the question on November eighth. If they vote yes, we would move forward with completing the contract process. We would ultimately present this governing body with the finalized contract. And then, assuming you approve it, it would go on to the Board of Public Utilities, being submitted to the Board of Public Utilities by American Water, along with our consent to operate within the borough. And then if approved by the Board of Public Utilities, we could expect a closing on the contract and the transfer of the system sometime in August of twenty twenty-three. It's a lengthy process, but it's, you know, it's statutorily driven and of course of the intervening election and then ultimately submission to the Board of Public Utilities. It often takes them sixty to ninety days to do their discovery, ask questions of American Water, the borough, and then move forward from there. That is a summary of the schedule that we'll... Mayor, I defer to you if you'd like to do questions now, if you'd like to wait till...
What I'd like to do, Kevin, can I pull the ordinance out of sequence? I'd like to have the public here and have members of the public ask questions of our experts while they're here. Close the public hearing, have the council discussion and vote, and then go back to our regular agenda. Kevin, that's fine?
Yes.
Alright, so I need a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance twenty-six seventy-eight dash twenty-two dash zero seven one eight. I'll read it in its entirety. Approving an agreement of sale between the borough and New Jersey American Water Company, Inc. For the sale of the borough's wastewater collection system and authorizing a proposal to be printed on the ballot for consideration by the voters within the borough of Somerville at the general election on November eighth, twenty twenty-two, providing for the sale of the borough's wastewater collection system to American Water Company, Inc. So I need a motion to open the public.
Second. Councilmembers Graham, Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Jonas Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Fromm.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Fitz.
Yes.
Public hearing, questions, comments? I'll start to my immediate right, recognition if you have questions, of myself, the administration, or our fellow members. First row, second row, up. Eric Allen, up.
Mr. Seawright. Brian Gallagher, Seventh Fairmont Avenue. I think, I think everybody agrees that the infrastructure is overdue for investment. We've dealt with it for many years. The I and I on the genesis of that letter, the agreement letter with the D P, because they were about to force us to make massive investments that the borough, quite frankly, could not have afforded. The proposal, well, it's really not a proposal, a response. It's interesting. There's, there's a lot of money put on the table. There's a lot of ability to make immediate investment, which is, which is warranted. I have two issues that I think need to be considered, maybe three. One, the process. I look at this and I think the process has been done a little bit backwards. I think this conversation should have been had prior to putting the RFP out. That the public should have been engaged in that process so that there's an understanding. We're kind of at the eleventh hour. In the middle of the summer, as you approach November, it's not a lot of time to educate people. They're not focused on, we all know they're not focused on, they're not focused on it towards in front of them. And we're looking at the prospect of selling the borough's infrastructure. And once you sell it, it's gone. You don't have that control anymore. You don't have control over the rate. At some point, the BPU will determine what those rates are. And I don't know the last time the BPU has ever denied a rate increase. I mean, they have, there have been some, but they're not all that common. The control of day to day, well, there's a problem. Now, I understand private, I'm, I'm all about private sector and privatizing certain areas. But I believe there are certain areas you have to tread very carefully. And I think this is one of them. And I think giving the public information allows them to make that informed decision. And at the eleventh hour, it is the council authorizing the sale. You are authorizing the sale. It says it right in the ordinance title. So every council person here will be committing that this will be sold. You've made that determination, unless you voted no. I don't, I don't know how you voted on the introduction, and I honestly don't know how you're going to vote tonight. But I think you need to think about that very carefully. Have you read the RFP, the response to the RFP? I tried to find it on the borough website. I couldn't find it. I don't know if it's there. That causes concern for me. People need to be informed. That is, when we, when we had responses from redevelopers, we posted them up online before we voted on them. That's the right way to do it. The public has the ability to review, understand what has happened. So I would caution you at this point, yes, we need investment. Is it better to invest as a borough controlled entity? Or is it better to invest as a private, a privatized borough infrastructure? I don't know the answer to that. But I think all of you have to understand what is that part of the process. And at the end of the day, it may be. But go through the process with the public before you begin this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's Richard Matthews, one sixty-eight seventh street. And my concern is you have someone telling you you're zero rate increase. I personally don't know what the rate is. I pay a minimum charge of sixty-five dollars. And history with New Jersey American Water on my water bill, it used to be a quarterly charge. I'd pay like thirty-four dollars for water and, you know, thirty-some dollars for facilities. All of a sudden, it's monthly charge. So my water rate, or my water bill, watered and doubled. And I didn't change any water. The water rate remained the same. A lot of stuff that the water rate will not increase. How about the facilities charge? How much is that?
This rate is the sewer rate, not the water rate.
I'm not talking about the water.
Different calculation.
There's going to be a facilities charge for the sewer. What is that going to be?
I would defer to...
Yeah, so they're adopting R rates.
I want to hear about rate, facilities.
Yeah, they're adopting all of our rates and fees associated with the system right now for service or wastewater. They're in the ordinance, Kevin, I don't know them off the top of my head. But they're maintaining R rates for two years at zero percent. And then, as I said, for three years, R rates will increase by three percent and then two years they'll go up by four percent.
What is the facilities charge?
There's only one sewer charge, correct?
No, it's just a user fee. It's a user fee. It's based on the, it's based on the, I was going to say consumption, but it's based on the use, based on the water concern, water use. So that's why...
Water use for the dries two months. Are they going to base their rate on the dries two months?
They are adopting R rates.
There's going to be no facilities charge on my bill.
You're going to get a sewer bill that's going to look like your sewer bill now because they're adopting R rates.
You keep saying rate.
We don't have a facility.
The rate is what they charge for the sewage that is treated.
Correct, we don't have a facilities charge.
Will there be one?
Will there be one? There'll be only what we have because that's what they're adopting. So if we don't have one, they're not going to have one.
Okay, I just wanted, this is on record now, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay. You're saying there's going to be no facilities charge, just the rate.
And I'm being clear, they're adopting R, R rates, R rates don't include a facility charge, which we just talked about.
We don't have a facilities charge, correct?
It's not a sewer.
No. Okay, so I want to know.
Any other questions, comments? Here come.
Yeah. Mike Kerwin, Eighth Ever Drive, Somerville, New Jersey. Today I went into my old mayor's file cabinet, circled up the dust and looked into my drawers and had five piles. By far, the biggest one was one called Sewer. This is an issue that the Somerville Borough Community has been facing for a very, very long time. The issue back in the late eighties was a moratorium of an old building within the sewer range, Sewer Regional District. And the solution was for us to agree, us, the collective borough community, to agree to pay whatever it took to fix the I and I problem to the DEP's satisfaction. Blank check. And that put the Somerville Borough Community at risk. I don't think that risk is gone away. And so we have an opportunity now, after all these years, to engage in a transaction that that risk, well, we know it's no longer going to be risked because part of the commitment will be at least nine and a half million dollars to fix the leaky system that we have once and for all. That can only help our environment and our community and I think it's really worthy of consideration. So I understand there's a lot of issues, questions, and I agree with Brian about the process. The process can always be approved. But I'm confident that we can have a robust conversation among us in the community, with the environmental commission, with other groups, with the DSA. I'm sure that everyone fully understands, you know, what we're doing here. But I do think this is a great opportunity to really fix, fix a problem that frankly, we're not going to do it. I mean, let's be honest, we're not going to do it. We haven't done it, we don't have the capacity to do it. Spread it out over a large organization and I think, I think that's, you know, I'll go to certain, yeah, support.
Thank you, Mayor. Last call for a public comment question. Your in nod, I'll ask for a motion to close the public. Second.
Councilmembers Graham, Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Jonas Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Fromm.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Fitz.
Okay, now I entertain a motion for adoption. I'll let you read it again. Twenty-six seventy-eight dash twenty-two dash zero seven one eight. Approving an agreement of sale between the borough and New Jersey American Water Company, Inc. For the sale of the borough's wastewater collection system and authorizing a proposal to be printed on the ballot for consideration by the voters within the borough at the general election on November eighth, twenty twenty-two, providing for the sale of the borough's wastewater collection system to American Water Company, Inc. Motion for adoption. Second. Alright, I'll go around the table if any comment or question. If none, you can say so and we'll move on to the next council person and we'll start up the grade.
Yes, thank you, your honor. Mr. Gallagher spoke about, you know, how quickly would they respond? My question or my report is, how quickly can we respond if we don't have the staff and we don't have the equipment? The problem that we have, and this I have been in town since nineteen eighty-three, we don't do sewers very well. We have not really ever had a history of keeping ahead of it. We have always been keeping behind it. And the more the town expands, the more difficult time we're going to have keeping up with it. It's simply not in our ability to control the sewers. And I, I don't say that as I'm ashamed of that, it has nothing to do with it. There are things in boroughs we're doing very well. For Somerville, sewers are not one of them. And this is an opportunity for us to actually pay up the debt that would incur and move on. That's an important thing. The other point I wanted to make is that this is a utility. This is not just for the people who own homes in town. It's for churches, schools, hospitals, the whole range of users in this town depend upon a fully functional sewer system. If that doesn't exist, the town could be in very deep trouble. So that's all I really wanted to say about that.
Cancel the show.
Well, I have more questions than comments. Coming in, I guess, late in the game, as you mentioned, Ryan, I do see the process as backward as Mr. Gallagher said. I, I mean, one question I have is, what other communities in length of time? I heard you mention a couple that were just signed, but is, is any other towns that have this long standing, ten, twenty, thirty years in, or is it totally new concept? The other question I have is, is, did we look into contracting out rather than selling? I, I think selling something as important as a sewer system is, if something went wrong down the road, is it going to be a concern to me? And as, as a resident who mentioned in terms of cost, I, I, cost to the residents, I, I'd like to see something longer than a seven-year contract that would, that would solidify a check and increase in fees, understanding it's complicated with the board of utilities. But those are some immediate questions that I have. And again, not being in the process early on, it may be a viewpoint to my colleagues, but to me, they're the questions I, I have to answer.
Mayor, can I address one?
Sure.
I can address all of them, of course, but the one question, because it was raised by former mayor too, about the process being somewhat backwards from that viewpoint. I wanted to point something out that if we had approached early and said, how would you like to sell the wastewater system? Your number one answer would be, how much and what are the details? I can't give you that viewpoint into what that would be. Can't, I can only tell you what other deals had at that point. But part of going after this process is gathering that information and then not only presenting it to you as a governing body, but giving you the opportunity to present it to the public for their consideration, but a fully informed public, right? So between now and the election, it's upon us now to start, you know, getting information out to the public, educating them, what the other options were. We raised a couple of options, like you mentioned contracting out. I assume what you're referring to is contract operation services, where you bring in a private operator. The thing about this option versus that option, we're keeping the system or even a shared services. Those last three, keeping it, shared services, contract operator, no one does anything for free. So we're looking at all the same costs, all the same requirements, all the same obligations on the part of the borough, just laid out in a different way. Under a couple of those scenarios, you wouldn't have manpower, let's say, doing the work. You'd have others doing the work for you, but you'd be paying for that. And I've done plenty of contract ops, contracts, you know, twenty-year engagements in Camden, Jersey City, Raway, just to name a few. And those arrangements, they work, they don't not work, they work, but they also come at a cost. And those costs are ever increasing. They're tied to an inflation index. So if it's five million dollars to operate the system this year, it's five plus million next year and so on, and so on, and so on. So it, it doesn't alleviate you of your burden. And part of what Paige, Kevin, and the rest of the team are looking at are, how do we get out of the sewer business if we wanted to not be in it? And what being, what not being in the sewer business would do for the borough in terms of economic ability and extra money and all the other considerations? So we did look at all of those various options at the beginning as a professional team. We weighed them out. And then the one missing piece we had was, what would be the result if we wanted to try and sell the systems? We couldn't gather that info without a request for bids. And that process is statutorily dictated and says, you know, we have to come to this step now. And then if you are willing, then that information gets presented to the public. But ultimately, the public decides whether this is what should happen to the system or not. You can recommend it or not, but if you let it go to a referendum, they'll be the final arbiter of whether that happens. So again, I, I understand the viewpoint, but I just wanted to express that we felt like what we were doing was gathering information ultimately. So it could be presented and then considered fully informed with all the various options available.
Well, we had met, and you are a little out of this venture. So I think it was actually the day you were sworn in was the council, the council, we had met regarding where we were going with the RFP and it was determined at that time that, that it was going to get settled, I guess. And I think that later in the day, actually, you were sworn in by my... Yeah, so, so I mean... so, so I mean, you did a engage with the council prior to that.
Yeah, actually, I met you in the hallway for like a second as you were coming in for your interview. But I think the, the other thing to consider, you asked if other people have done this, and there are other examples I could give you, besides the four or five that the team has worked on, there are other examples we have nothing to deal with. And there is also another process called water infrastructure protection. That process, and by the way, your buyer probably would have loved it if he participated in that process, but that's a non-referendum-based process. We can negotiate a sale to someone. That cuts the public out entirely. I, I don't necessarily feel like it's the right thing to do, just personally, that's not what's important, but I felt like the governing body didn't think, well, we really don't have the options to the governing bodies. That didn't seem like one that was, you know, overly enthusiastic. And on top of that, you also have to say, you're totally incapable of taking care of your system. We might be in rough shape right now, but we're not totally incapable. You know, there are things we could do if we had to do them, but they come at a price, they come at a cost, and ultimately, the customers would end up paying for those actions. So that, that was part of our calculus as well.
So the, the one question that I did hear, the agreements that you have with other communities, are they long-term? Is this a new concept or are they in twenty, thirty years?
So I could go back and find, I think Mannville probably, if I'm not mistaken, might be American Water's oldest contract. It's, it's very old. You know? It's not, it's not a public, it's not a public.
It's not. It's, um.
Not man.
Well, it's, it's not.
Not man, it was not man. Yeah, I'll provide it later. I, I'm misspeaking, that's a long county, but there is, there is one that's old. There are many others, like Longwood Township is about four or five years old, if I'm not mistaken. Egg Harbor Township.
Had deals, I think, maybe one of the oldest, like this team.
Yeah, American provided a list to American Water of, of deals that they have structured and have been a part of.
So it's a relatively new concept?
Statute's been around a really long time, so I don't know if I can say that it's a new concept, but those are more recent deals because they're in their bid. They don't want to refer back to some of those. We can do that research, Councilwoman, I want to get you information on all the deals that have been done. I could also get information on some of the WIPPA or Water Infrastructure Protection Act deals that are getting done, but you could probably Google about those a lot easier. There's more, more input from the public and more controversy, let's say, because they're not going to get to vote on that.
Thank you.
Councilman Weed.
Oh, yes, thank you. So I have, well, I looked into the Bound Brook process to try to explain it to family members of mine who live in Bound Brook, who was on the ballot, I believe, last year. Yeah, so, and I talked to one of the council members there that I know. If you don't mind, just explain, were you involved in the Bound Brook process?
I was.
Would you mind just explaining the Bound Brook process and since they approved it, where they're at right now, the year after?
Yeah, so the Bound Brook process seems this, exactly the same process. We considered other alternatives and other options. I believe Bound Brook did not have a sewer utility, let's say, per se, as, you know, an accounting section, so it was just in the general budget. They actually made a sewer utility before they went out to bid. They had to increase their rates that year because they were facing increased costs. They increased their rates, then they went out to bid, they got bid results. Their system sold for approximately five million dollars. And American Water was the winner of that procurement as well. They moved to governing bodies, decision like the one you're facing tonight, they chose to move it to referendum. At referendum, they had a, you know, I think it was a four to one or a three to one vote in favor. I can't give you the exact numbers. And the public voted in favor of it, and we moved on then, let's say, in about December or January, finalized the contract, presented it to the governing body for final acceptance. That was approved, and then American Water went on to submit applications to the Board of Public Utilities for a municipal consent approval, again, consent to operate in the Borough's territory. That was recently approved at a public hearing at the Board of Public Utilities, and we have since moved to gather our closing, and we'll be closing in the next few weeks, through a month.
Okay, thank you. And I, Mayor, I will just say, you know, this is what is before us today. We're not selling it tonight. We are just putting it on the ballot. The beauty of this is, all seven of our personal feelings aside, it's up to the voters. And we're going, there's a public information campaign, it sounds like Mr. Scrible was, was talking about, which is good, we'll get the information out. You know, the website, we have our social media to get information out on that. And at the end of the day, the voters don't get it wrong. So, you know, it is, I, I have one hundred percent confidence in the voters making the right choice regardless of my personal feelings about this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pass one more. Uh, yes, I, I have a question. There is an additional charge that, for making new connections to the system. And I believe that, that payment goes directly to SRVSA, but I'm not a hundred percent certain to that. Are you familiar with?
We're talking about a connection fee.
Connection fee, yes.
So no, that, the Borough fee, and there may be a component to SRVSA, there's two connection fees. One is the SRVSA, one is in this one.
Okay, so.
They're all for a charge.
Presumably, the SRVSA will continue to be under the control of SRVSA, and you will have nothing to do with that. But what about the municipal one, in fact? Will that continue to be the charged thing, right?
No, so once you have, once you know we're on the system, you have no need for a connection fee. A connection fee is for your to maintain the wastewater system and operate it. So once the system is sold, American Water doesn't charge connection fees in that way. There are, for instance, if you were going to build a new development, you'd work with the public utility about what your expansion of the infrastructure would be, who would take care of it, how would it be. That's different than what the Borough does in terms of the connection fee, and we really do that post, say, that.
So the Borough portion of the connection fee would just go away.
That's right.
Well, it's actually a cost savings to.
Developers.
New developers, and I believe that also applies to, I don't know if it's a whole consideration.
If they haven't been previously connected to the system.
How would connection fee, what did that service endure?
There's a formula for how, you know, that includes, that's a statute.
Now, I noticed here, we're getting seven million toward paying off existing bonds, which includes, of course, the sewer bonds, one point three million of like.
One point oh seven.
One point oh seven million. Also, American Water is putting up nine and a half million for capital improvements, which would, if we, if we made the capital improvements under our own sewer utility, we would have to issue bonds to cover ninety percent of that.
And, and did documents there say that it costs that American Water experience that we would experience as a public entity if we were pursuing some improvements?
Yes. So, uh, it looks, looks positive.
That's it, gentlemen? Thank you. Mr. Brew. Mr. President.
No question.
I have some one quick question. With the scenario in terms of the timing, referendum, soon as it passes, the documents get done, we will have to budget in our municipal budget at least two-thirds of the operation for next year.
Yeah, we broke that news to Paige there. She's prepared to, to deal with that. And again, if it could be done faster, I think all parties would want to work faster after the public says, yes, go ahead and do that.
But we will continue to own and operate the system under our auspices with any necessary bond and repairs until probably September of next year, at which point, following fiscal year twenty-four, we would have no more budget, personnel, etc.
And the contract includes those provisions, governing responsibility and operation and all that in this interim period of time, if the public votes in favor of the contract. Those provisions are in place. It's evenly divided.
And my last comment, I'll echo my, my youth councilman to the right. This, this vote, up or down today, only allows the referendum to happen. And it's incumbent upon us, through the administration, through the Environmental Commission, through advocacy groups, to give people the information they need. For my, my educators had our permitted, you know, knowledge of power. We do a poor job in presenting this, educating people, and they have questions, and, and they do not support the referendum, we'd have to deal with, you know, with the ramifications of that in next year's budget from going forward. I did a very quick calculation on my own sewer bill, which is seventy-five dollars a quarter for three hundred for the year. At the end of the seven years, I'd be paying about three hundred and forty-four dollars for sewage. So that's a total increase over seven years of forty-four dollars. Sewer system is the unseen behemoth. You don't appreciate it when it's working. I was on Davenport Street last fall, and they pulled a pipe out, it was date stamped nineteen twelve. That's probably not unusual, that the age of some of that pipe is, is clamoring for attention. And rather attend to it beforehand than ever. So I certainly support the referendum, I trust the voters of this town, and I trust our ability to give them the tools they'll need when they go into the voting, become the number eight. And with that, Kevin Alas for a roll poll for Duncan.
Council members, Grant O'Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
I'm staying.
Roger Verum.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
All right, so, all right, what's the next step then?
So the next step is for Kevin and I to talk to the county clerk, make sure we get the question passed on. Of course, your ordinance will be advertised, adopted, and then we'll talk to the county clerk and get that question onto the ballot, get to view that hopefully in draft, make sure we like the placement, and we'll move on to an education campaign with our partner, American Water.
Right, and I know there's a date at which we have to get it.
Yes, the nineteenth is the absolute date.
I spoke to you last week.
There's no charge for that since it's part of the general election, okay?
Yeah, right, it's not a special election, right?
Yeah, it was a special election, it caused us to announce.
And this question, by the way, council is exactly, structured exactly the same as the Bound Brook question, so I have a feeling that the clerk would find it acceptable. There's no reason why they wouldn't. The, the data's different, but the question is the same.
All right, so there's a lot of work on our part ahead, and again, give the public what they need, make an informed decision, and, and again, I, I know that our electoral vote is so. But gentlemen, thank you. Kevin, thank you, Paige, thank you for your, you know, work in getting us to this point. Many steps between now and election day.
All right.
We'll go back to our regular agenda. We have members up. Let me just give a minute for the, for the third. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. All right, all. We have representatives of TFE with us tonight, TFE, are the owners of the.
One will come down.
The Baker &amp; Taylor site on Kirby Avenue, southeast corner of the town. Baker &amp; Taylor book operation has been gone for probably fifteen years. There's a series of owners, various proposals for redevelopment of the site. The currently existing approved project, which was approved by the planning board probably two to three years ago. The operators and firmers tonight have pledged to construct the project as been approved with no changes to what was, you know, presented and approved by the planning board at that point. They have run into some environmental issues at the site, which will entail some cleanup. And I thought it would be important for not just the neighbors in the immediate vicinity, but people down to know, you know, exactly what that cleanup involves. Unlike most of the other redevelopment sites that we've done, which were basically vacant land, didn't require any kind of demolition of existing facilities, this site is different because it's got a, an old tired warehouse there with some, with some concerns. I thought it would be important for the owners to come in and let us know what they found and what the process is, what the DEP requires of them, and what it's going to mean to neighbors in the immediate area as well as for the town itself. So unless you could introduce yourselves, name of the address, and connection with the project, and just give us a, you know, a thumbnail of where you are, what's going to happen over the next several weeks.
So I'm Francine Tyckbell, in-house counsel at TFE Properties. My voice is gone today, so forgive me.
Carrie Tyckbell, president of TFE Properties.
I, I brought a little, should I stand up?
Well, bring it, bring your chair.
Yeah, I brought a little visual because I thought maybe if I showed you the layout of the property.
Pictures are always good.
And, and maybe it would help you to understand.
I'm very familiar with it, but some of the.
No, just the locations of some of the issues.
Sure.
There you go.
Oh, thank you.
Do you want to slide on down? Okay, did the camera, did that?
I'll readjust the camera.
Good?
Okay.
Thank you.
So this is a property which I know you all know very well. This is Kirby Avenue, and this is the existing warehouse building. So the first thing I want to mention is that there were no industrial activities taking place in the history of the property to the best of everyone's knowledge. No bookbinding was taking place there. It was a bookbinding company that used this building as a warehouse for distribution of the books that is sold, but it didn't manufacture them there. There were no chemicals at the property in connection with the operation of the building. For that reason, historically, there was no expectation of contamination here. So when we acquired the property five, six, seven years ago, whatever it was, we had our consultant go out there and do a typical, what they call, phase one investigation, where they walked the property, they inspected visually, they identified any areas of concern. And at that time, there were almost none, except that our consultant observed a former PSCNG transformer at this corner of the property right here, which he was not concerned about and told us he wasn't concerned about. Ultimately, after we closed on the property, we learned that some soil in the immediate vicinity of that transformer was tested positive for the presence of PCBs, which we presumed, our consultant presumed, related to the transformer and the equipment that used to sit in that spot. Called in PSCNG, they pulled away the concrete base, they tested it. They concluded that the PCBs did not derive from the transformer that was their property. There was also a concrete pad beneath it. We said there was an older transformer at some point in the history of this property. They disclaimed this property earlier. So we said, okay, it's our property, we'll clean it up. So you clean it up by identifying where the contamination ends around the perimeter of the transformer. And we just kept going and going, and it just kept, we kept finding more. So we removed the soil here and parted it into a pile that I think some of you may have noticed over the last few years that this has been removed. And we proceeded to test, because that's the process, you test until the perimeter is clean. And ultimately, to fast forward to where we are today, the testing expanded all the way in this direction around the eastern and southern walls of the building. Not this way, but just along these walls and, and somewhere over here. To the conclusion of our consultants and our LSRP, which is a kind of a DEP liaison, was that this must have been historic fill that was brought onto the property many years ago, perhaps during the construction of this building decades and decades ago. Historic fill can have like pieces of brick, pieces of wood, but can also have contaminants that are brought onto the property from whatever site the fill is brought in from. So we think there were two derivations of the contamination here, some that was truly attributable to this transformer. taken by prospective purchasers of the property, they identified a patch over here, just a very limited area, also containing historic fill, also cannot be explained, not immediately adjacent to the building, but could have been here for eighty years, fifty years, twenty years, we don't know, and we don't know why. We don't know what was there that had been removed many years ago and needed fill to be brought in from somewhere else. So also contaminated with PCBs. Here PCBs and PAHs, and the nature of what was found here in this historic fill triggers not only state supervision by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, but also the EPA, so the federal government. That adds a whole layer of supervision and report preparation that is unusual, and most people don't have to deal with. They deal just with DEP, they engage in LSRP, the licensed site remediation professional that comes in and supervises remediation, they submit whatever reports they need to, to the state of New Jersey, the state of New Jersey blesses it, back forth, back forth. Here, we had to go beyond that, to the federal government as well, and their requirements were even more stringent than the DEP's requirements. On top of that, and this is why this has become such a stretched out saga, when you undertake to demolish any building that has concrete or other materials in it, you are obligated under law to test that concrete to ensure there are no contaminants in the concrete before you remove it from the property and either recycle it onsite or offsite or bring it to a facility that might use it somewhere else. So in the course of routine testing that the federal government asked us to do sooner than we otherwise would have, we determined that there were caulk seams throughout the walls and in some portions of the floor of the building. The caulk itself had PCB contamination, unrelated to the soil, just for whatever reason that we can't understand, the caulk that was used to seal the seams had contamination in it. And so the EPA hears that, all the reports have to get revised, more testing, more testing. Buyers wanted more testing, they wanted to fully understand the scope of what they were stepping into, questions as to whether the concrete itself was contaminated, and our results came back, yes, but in an inexplicable way. Sometimes it was contaminated close to the caulk, sometimes in random spots, questions about how it was tested. Long story short, the bottom line is, after months and months and months of testing and submissions to the state and the federal government, we have now submitted all the reports to the state, it's called the remedial action work plan, and to the EPA, it's called SIP, S-I-P, short for Site Investigative Protocol. It's a plan that each governmental agency has approved for the remediation of the site. And what you may see trucks, you know, in recent months, we have undertaken to remove the contaminated fill around the building entirely, so that utility infrastructure when the time comes can be laid here without any risk of exposure to contaminated soil. It will be off-site disposed of in accordance with law. Most of that's been removed already, but because there's post-removal testing, they find like a little spot here, a little spot there that's still contaminated, they have to come back, dig again, send to the lab again, wait again, and again, check the perimeter to make sure they've gotten it all. So that's one effort that's been underway. All the soil around the former transformer site has been removed and disposed of in accordance with law. The patch of contamination here is going to be remediated by capping it with the future improvements of the property, all in accordance with law. In other words, there's a certain depth of thickness, whether it's landscaping or the building itself, that seals that soil and ground in a very limited area, all in accordance with the plans that have been submitted to the government. And finally, within the building, we have begun in preparation eventually for submitting for a demolition permit to remove the contaminated caulk. All the caulk has been removed as of Friday, and all the existing asbestos in the building has been removed already. And we have a schedule for next steps, you know, with the hope of prepping the building, whether it's us as we hope to develop it, or, you know, if a buyer were to come in and develop it. The uncertainties associated with the building have been difficult and challenging to have everyone understand and get a grip on. And so our goal is ultimately to demolish it and position ourselves to construct. So sorry, I probably went on too long, but I know that there's been some confusion, and I know that when you hear contamination, there's also an element of fear with respect to neighbors and ideas of leaching and all these possibilities that people might think of. It's contained, we've examined it, you know, to death at this point, all governmental agencies have had their say. Exhaustively, I cannot tell you how excruciating the process has been, and we're poised and ready to go. So if anyone has any questions.
What's your next step? Are you going to build on it, or what's, where's the future lie for you?
So ideally, in short order, we need to have the util, any utilities that have any connections to the building have to be shut off. We have applications, you know, to the electrical company, whatever it is, that needs to be shut down before you can seek a demolition permit. So once we have those in hand from the utility companies, we would make application to the borough for a demolition permit, go ahead and schedule the demolition, which will take weeks to complete. Once that's done, we have all of our governmental approvals. I know the site plans still have to get signed, we need to post some connection fees, you know, associated with, you know, ultimately pulling building permits, but the first step would be site work. And that can start before building permits are actually issued.
You have a permit, however, to build on the project at this point?
We have all municipal site plan approval, we have all outside governmental agency approvals. We have everything except building permits in our hand, and the site plans, like I said, the final step in getting them signed is posting the bonds. That's really it.
Tom, special. So you're going to follow the original plan that was approved years ago?
Three, four years ago.
Three or four years ago. Without any changes?
Correct.
Okay. Now, you said that there was asbestos removal had been completed.
Yes.
So there's no danger of airborne asbestos?
No. Notice was given to all the agencies. I actually, I shared some copies of those notices recently with Colin. And that was all done in accordance with law and, you know, licensed asbestos professionals, and that's done.
But now, there's still a PCB on site in that pile of dirt on the parking lot.
There was a pile, a small pile for a while, associated with the area around the transformer cab. That's been removed.
That has been removed.
That was, that particular pile, and I know there were inquiries about, has been removed offsite some time ago. Right now, the removal of the impacted soil along the eastern and southern walls is an ongoing project that's been going on for the last several months, supposed to take about three weeks. But because when, you know, they would test the perimeter to make sure they got it all, they come back again with some hits. So I believe there may be soil set aside for removal, because I know we have codes for the removal. Some may have been removed already, some may remain to be removed, but that's all going to go, that's all going to leave.
Now, is this leaching into the soil and getting to the water table?
No. No, there's no groundwater impact, none of that.
Those tests have been done?
It's been reviewed by the DEP, by the EPA, there's no, there's no impacted groundwater here.
So water tests were done?
To my knowledge, yes. But we can share all the reports, we can share the final remedial action work plan that was approved by the DEP and the SIP by the Environmental Protection Agency. They have very stringent requirements, and it was those stringent requirements that got us going across the building as well.
Ryan?
How far away from the walls of the property? I know that there are obviously homes there. How close were they to the property line, the PCBs?
So most of it was concentrated, you see the green line, which is the outline of the building, most of it was concentrated close to the building wall. Whether there was a hit here, you know, a little bit midway, you know, I have all of those charts in our files as to where the hits were. I certainly don't believe any testing was done on the other side of that orange line, which is the property line, but there's no reason to believe that any fill would have been brought here because this is the railroad track. So any development that went on years and years ago would have been within this property, probably to build this building, and this is the railroad across here.
What about the, for us, the right side of the building?
These homes or whatever these are here?
Those are three houses.
Yes.
Right.
So again, that's, that's not our property, so we wouldn't have had the right to go on and test, and we wouldn't have reason to. I mean, our obligations are with respect to the property that we own, but again, most of the contamination here was in the vicinity of this transformer cab, right, or encircling, and then again, straddling the green line heading down, and then along here, and petering out as it, as it went this way.
So I guess then my, you said you'll share with us, I just want to make sure that, you know, knowing where your property ends and then where residents' property ends, just making sure that if it was close to that property line, that we inform our ordinance with the, if that's the case, that the residents are aware of that issue.
Right, so here, I mean, here's the edge of pavement, there's some kind of, I don't know if that's a dry or what that is.
Two, two, two.
What is that?
Two, two, two.
Right, so, you know, it ends somewhere around here, it doesn't extend all the way up here, so I don't think these three locks whatsoever are, you know, are even at risk of being near any of where the PCB was found. Here, there's some kind of roadway, but again, it didn't straddle the orange boundary line, it was concentrated more toward the building, which, you know, I can't know, you know, if there's a spot here or there, because I don't know when this fill was brought onto the property. I don't know if it was, if it's been there a hundred years, eighty years, ten years. We, you know, we took title five or six years ago, so nobody can explain to us where it came from, but this exists all over New Jersey. I mean, we have historic fill on, unfortunately, a number of our properties.
You share those findings with Kevin's office, Kevin can ask our environmental consultant just to take a look. There's a huge grade change from the rear properties on Adams Road to the right to the site. It's got to be thirty, forty feet, we used to go sledding there with Baker &amp; Taylor's permission.
Right.
And there's a huge hill, so your property sits well below the backyards to your east, but I think it'd be good just to, just to have, you know, our expert take a look and see if, I gotta think the fill was brought in when this was built in the late sixties.
I mean, that's the presumption of our consultants. I'd be happy to make our LSRP available if someone on your team wants to have a conversation, very well versed in the whole property and the whole situation. And LSRP's, for those who may not be familiar, they, they're private professionals, but about ten, fifteen years ago, the state of New Jersey came up with this LSRP program of kind of bestowing authority on these private professionals to be a liaison with DEP, so that they, they can act on behalf of DEP, so DEP wouldn't be quite so burdened. So our, our LSRP, you know, it's almost an agent of the state, so we'd be happy to make them available if there are any very technical questions.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, so my question is, obviously, you have the three, South Kirby, you have three residences there, and then you have.
These?
Yes, you have three residents, and then that road, Quarry Lane, which ends up going over the train tracks in the bridge water.
Is that this Quarry Lane?
Yeah.
Okay.
So believe it or not, that actually is part of Somerville Quarry Lane. Is that, I take it from what you have said, that is not part of the scope of your project in that little street there?
No, not at all. I colored this in orange so that, and I know it's not terribly visible from where you are, but this is the boundary line of our property, so we have no involvement with anything beyond.
Yeah, because I know the eastern part of that is, goes up right against that road, and Kevin, this is probably a whole nother topic, but that road needs some, needs some luck, to put it bluntly. It's a decent amount of puddles, a lot of trucks that go over it. I don't know if we can look into that, especially, I imagine there will be more traffic.
We'll wait for that construction to be finished.
Yeah, well, I'm just, for, that's all I'm saying, no pun intended.
Put it in the bag.
Well, it's fine to standing, developers, they pose an infrastructure trust, right?
Yeah.
So we'll have money to utilize around the building.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
The only question we have, during, during the demolition, standard heavy equipment, anything special because of what was there? Would there be tenting of the building or any?
I think our LSRP can answer that best, but like I said, I'm also happy to share the plans that we're obligated to abide by, but it'll be completely in compliance with law and under the supervision of the LSRP. So even though we have a highly qualified demolition crew who's very experienced with impacted concrete and impacted caulk and the circumstances that we face, we also are obligated to have that LSRP, that professional who's an agent of the DEP present, to witness and supervise, to make sure that everything is being done in accordance, not only with law, but in accordance with the plans that have been approved by the state and federal government.
My main concern was, unlike a lot of our other redevelopment efforts, this is right in the residential area.
On the same.
And even if I didn't live there, I'd still be concerned that, you know, the calls we would get when, you know, gowned workers would come in with all kinds of special equipment.
Right.
You know, what's going on.
So what's supposed to happen is anything.
I just want to be sure that.
Next step, I do want to clarify, because it's a valid, it's a legitimate concern that neighbors might imagine that, you know, the goal is first to remove anything that has contamination before demolition, so we already did the caulk. What I didn't mention is that there's going to be a two or three week period of follow-up concrete testing, after we've already spent tens and tens of thousands of dollars on concrete testing, to make sure that we pick out and identify any possible areas of concrete that might have been contaminated by touching up against the caulk. That will be removed in isolation before the entire demolition effort takes place, where the remainder is identified as clean and okay. It's a process, it's not, it's not going to be a quick process, but it's going to be a careful process, and there's a whole, there's a whole plan.
Okay, and the last question, demolition of the building, what about the removal of the blacktop that's there now? Will that be part of it, or is that a future phase?
I think that's separate. I'd have to get an answer on that. I know there's no known concern, you know, having to do removal of any asphalt or any other areas, I guess you mean the existing parking areas. Yeah.
Because it's quite a large field.
Right.
I just, when you get to that point, just work.
Yeah, we can get a chronology.
Probably will need some road closures, and it's, it's a very confined area, and access points are hard, so, you know.
As we apply to the demolition permit, I'm sure the borough will guide us.
Work with you to give you access, or we'll need enough advance.
We do have developers in here.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll need enough advance if you need to close some of the, you know, material streets.
Right. But we won't be doing anything until we have the permitting, with your guidance.
I've gotten several questions from neighbors, they've seen a lot of activity there, and I'm glad you could come in and just give us an update.
A lot of the activity has been in testing phase, a lot of it, for many, 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 many months. And then, you know, removal of the soil like I described, now removal of the caulk, the asbestos, and so that's why there's a lot of activity.
One neighbor asked me, they're going to have to keep their windows shut during the demolition because, you know, asbestos, and so I'll get those answers for you. If you could prepare just a quick summary sheet.
Sure.
And have Kevin post it on the website.
Can we, can we have like hard copy sent to within two hundred feet?
Yeah, we can take care of that, too, that is regular.
Yeah, let's apply.
Definitely, thank you.
Again, information is power and knowledge is comfort, too.
Yeah, we don't want any misunderstandings, we want to communicate.
We waited, we waited a long time for that site to be redone. I just want to be sure that everybody understands that it's going to be done slowly, carefully, and safely.
First you move a diligent thing.
Thank you.
And I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Can't wait to see the bulldozer.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks. The previous one. Again, information is power and, and knowledge is comfort too.
Yeah, we don't want any misunderstandings, we want to communicate.
We waited, we waited a long time for that site to be redeveloped. I just want to be sure that everybody understands that it's going to be done slowly, carefully, and safely.
First you move a diligent thing. Thank you.
And I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Can't wait to see the bulldozer, but I do.
Yeah, you got your license.
Yes.
Thanks.
The previous one. Our, we have a second topic discussion, this is very brief. Um, we have a recommendation from the Ad hoc planning committee, page one, that was presented to you later earlier tonight, so ask you to take a look at it. Roger, do you want to just give a very brief summary of what our next step, what the committee's recommending to the council? Is our next step should be?
Certainly, so, um, the committee met multiple times, the committee was, uh, made up of various members of the, uh, of the town of the borough. Um, we had obviously members of the higher standing committees, members of the environmental commission, members of the zoning committee, members of the, um, planning board, um, as well as myself and President Pitts, um, our OEM coordinator, and quite a swath of folks, and again, um, the recommendation, the, the main recommendations from a lot of folks was to have the owner of, uh, this, we'll have a lot of slides to back up. So, um, there were four premises that were, uh, created for us to review based on what the council had asked. Um, through our discussions, it became very clear that the property in most need of attention, uh, is, uh, properties, because it's not just one property, it's the properties on, um, east, on the Cliff Street. And so that's the Brookside Apartments on, on East Cliff, and the Garden Apartments that are right on that side of the street. Uh, and the reason being is that they were most impacted by the floodwaters. Um, other parts of, of the Garden Apartments were done so. Uh, the other, uh, Garden Apartments that were impacted heavily reside on South Bridge. Those apartments are not in the Garden Apartment Districts, those apartments are in the, um, redevelopment zone. So that did not fall in the scope of, of this conversation. Uh, it did not fall under the scope of the committee, though we, uh, are making, um, are going to make a recommendation that they be considered with these same, similar guidelines. Um, the guidelines that went through here, uh, once the, uh, committee focused on this area, um, was firstly to compel the owner of the property, uh, instead of remediating and, and doing something different, would be to apply for blue acres or green acres, um, which is, uh, we've had, according to, um, the council, and not according to council, according to the borough, we've had two, um, landowners apply for blue acres, and they've both been denied.
Correct.
Um, so it's not something that is a, a feasible, um, it could be feasible, could not be. It's also, um, um, one of our properties that does generate a significant amount of tax revenue. Um, so that would be tax, that would be off the tax rules. Um, next to that was to allow the developer, um, to raise what they have now and to build up to five stories on the existing property. Um, that would be a tiered building approach. Um, and it would be the, uh, the major concern when we listen to the planning board and to the environmental commission and to our neighbors was that, uh, coverage was a big concern in perviable surfaces. So based on a site walk and a site plan that we have, um, the recommendation was made to keep the same amount of impervious surfaces that currently exist on the property, um, and, uh, to try to keep as many of the indigenous, uh, trees that are currently on the property there. Uh, so that way we have a, um, a means to, again, hold off any kind of, uh, soil movement or, or, you know, try to absorb some of the rainwater that comes through. The first floor would be for parking, as was in the original, uh, recommendations. Uh, and then it would be, uh, a total of five stories with the, uh, entire building as it would be. Um, and again, it would be, the, it would not be ninety percent coverage, it would be coverage, uh, based on the current coverage that the, uh, buildings take up, uh, just in, in whatever manner the builder decides to build. Um, and then there are other considerations, uh, that we reviewed, as well as, um, you know, a means of egress out of the rear of the building, uh, or whatever buildings that there will be, for our first responders to come in if need be, uh, but also for people to leave if, if we have a flash flood situation in the way that we previously did. Um, there are recommendations from the committee to create, um, a pre-warning system, uh, to make sure that the, you know, next member of the borough does, but for that to be the case with the owner of the property. And then, um, there was also a recommendation, I mean, there are other recommendations, but that's, those are, that's the, the major gist of it. Um, there was another recommendation to ensure that in the, you know, round recommendation, and we can't create this, but any kind of lease agreement that, that is created, that the residents who live there understand that they're in full zone. Um, and again, these are, and I can't stress this enough, recommendations, that is what these are. These are recommendations that are taken before you send it to the discussion, that are going to the planning board, um, to create an ordinance. Um, but these are only recommendations as an ad hoc committee, we cannot say this is what you're going to do. We can say these are the things that we've looked at, we have environmental engineers on our committee, we have land use, uh, folks on our committee, we have people who have served as planners and as advisors and engineers and all these different things. And through all these conversations, um, this, these were the recommendations that the committee settled on to bring to you and, and to the rest of the governing body.
All right, so let's do this, 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 the group just got this tonight, let's, let's take some time to look it through. Um, let's prepare copies of these recommendations, get them to the planning board, let's have them take a look. Um, they're eventually going to get any ordinance that we would, that we would introduce anyway. So, let's, let's have them have an initial look at it before we even start the ordinance process.
And, and our recommendation is, obviously, there's some concerns that this is, um, hyper-focused on one area, uh, and also to bring it to land use attorneys to ensure that this is not, uh, spot zoning. So that's another recommendation that the, the committee has to ensure that we're not doing this and that it turns out that it's something that would be, uh, you know, out of line with legal.
Randy, anything that he missed?
No.
You good?
I will.
All right, so I, I think, um, you said, take a look, and, yes?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I, I've been reading this constantly since last one, considerably. How many buildings are you talking about? Because it seems to me as if you were looking at some kind of a bridge system between buildings that would allow people to escape. I wasn't quite clear on the number of units, I know how many units you were talking about, but you were talking about five stories, but how many buildings is included in that scenario?
We are not in the process, this is an ordinance for land use, this is not, we're not building a building.
So you're saying that whatever's there would be five stories or less, but you're not saying how many? You're just looking at globally, exactly.
Again, we're not designing buildings.
No, I was just asking, you're looking at globally, so you're saying, you're not designing it, but I just wondered what the number would be.
It's the same density though.
And, and it also depends on the amount of coverage, so a building takes up, uh, X, X percent of coverage. So that determines how many buildings can be built, but within those limits, it's up to the developer, it's not us.
Right, I, we did, that is, that is not something that an ordinance should...
No, it's if it's eight acres or whatever it is, and, and you're setting the limit at what exists there, that much is...
You can't set the number of those.
And so basically, the footprint of the, of the foundation.
What we're saying is that based on, and based on what we have, what the, what is currently on the premises, there's a certain amount of coverage that's there. And the committee decided to recommend that, that a percentage of that property, that was the amount of coverage that we're looking for. We cannot dictate to, uh, any, any developer what their building was for. So, that's out of the scope of what a recommendation from this committee would come.
Or is if he's allowed fifty thousand square feet, I'd say. It could be one building, it could be smaller pod buildings, but the total coverage could not exceed what's there now.
That's only the remaining coverage on the land, it's not, uh, how used or vertical. The vertical coverage would be, would be limited by the height, which is probably...
That's what I'm saying, so, okay. That's, that kind of...
Yeah, five stories would be roughly forty, forty-five feet.
And the recommendation was that it's a tiered thing, so it's not on the, um, that, that the highest point of the building would not be the closest to the roadway, that the, i- if, if the developer was going to go five stories, it would be towards the rear of the property, uh, and not right on the edge of Cliff Street. It's, yeah, step back maybe.
Or step per, kind of, perhaps.
That, that sounds somewhat familiar, that's why I'm saying that.
It, it...
But it wasn't clarified, I, I've heard that before, there's another, there's another...
Sure, it, it does, it does, but it really significantly cuts back on, um, ninety percent impervious and, um, five stories throughout the entire property, uh, as well as significantly, what was it, fifty-five units per acre? Um, significantly more, uh, density than what the committee came up with, uh, both, both in impervious coverage and in the density, uh, that, that the develop, that the owner was going to be able to do on said property. Because it's not one, uh, owner, uh, in that, that, that area, in the, uh, one district that we're talking about, it's actually two garden apartments, um, so that has to be reflected in this, in that if the other owner of the other property were to, to make changes to theirs, this all falls into that same realm.
All right, so should we let, uh, the planning board have a, have a look at it then? We can have a dialogue back and forth.
Yes.
And then we can, we can craft it, hopefully craft an ordinance for introduction, uh, and then that'll be hanging up after the planning board for a second.
We should do that.
Oh, it doesn't have to, I'm sorry, it, it doesn't necessarily have to, they can craft the ordinance, I mean, they, they have the ability to do that.
The process requires that the planning board review it and make their recommendations.
Let's, let's start with them.
The council's vote on whether or not to adopt.
All right, so let's start with them, and then have a look, I'd like to see it back and then have, I think, I'd prefer to craft the ordinance at this table, but we can, we can talk to the planning board, work that out.
Is, is this possibly, is this public information going to be posted on the website? That's my question.
So, so, so just so I understand the direction here, so you're, you're saying, send it to the planning board, can you do exactly what?
To, to... Review, do these in terms of the bulk standards that they're recommending.
And give us their, their organization track.
Then we'll put that in an introdu-, an ordinance for introduction. Once that's introduced, at this body, send it to the planning board, and then back here for the hearing and adoption.
And, and I just don't want us to...
And whatever, it's, it's public documented, it was a public, you know, command.
Can we get this from the we- website, so it's, it's posted and people can read it? But, understanding, these are just recommendations for now, this is nothing, nowhere near final.
Yes, all right, thank you. Everybody good with that? Do we, do we need an motion on that, Randy?
Does it sound like there's any opposition to doing that?
No, as Roger said, we want to make sure that it goes to the side of the lawyer. No, no, we don't need a resident. No, all right.
Yeah, the only other question was, was I guess, the committee, because I sat through all meetings, uh, one was that, it was always that, the undercurrent discussion, that really unaffiliated either a redevelopment
or unaffiliated the planning board, and just get a, a, you know, some feedback.
Let's, let's start with that.
Yeah, we'll also be having a conversation with the planning board attorney as far as, um, the requirements they have and anything else.
Yeah, let's start with that, before we go, you know, the wrong way down a one-way street.
The, at the end of the day, uh, I do want to add that the, this was what we were tasked with from the council. Uh, but our goal, once this is, uh, done and over with, we've already done a lot of legwork as far as looking at what the, um, Hundred Year Flood looks like and, and all those different things. So we're going to be also then looking at the scope of the borough as a whole and seeing what we can do for the rest of the residents, um, as well as getting in touch with the county and see if we can make some kind of county plan, because it's not just Somerville that was impacted by this flooding, it was all of our neighbors. Um, so if, if this, if any, any long-term relief past this particular situation is really going to need all three units in this county to get together and make a plan. Uh, so, as we are closing the chapter on this part, we are looking forward to figuring out a way to better prepare ourselves and maybe finding ways to mitigate on a county level, instead of it being borough by borough and township by township.
It's really well said, Roger, and Randy, thank you both for your leadership on this.
And I, I would like to keep this committee, I would, I do not wish to disfend this committee, I guess it has not done. Let's, let's get this, let's follow this process through to an ordinance, and then we can decide, you know, to, you know, keep the committee in a given new direction, and I'd like to do that, so, next time we meet, thank all the members of that committee. This, um, very, very professional group, uh, a lot, a lot of expertise, a lot of differing opinions too, but as, as a first start, I, I like this, so. Okay, going back to the agenda, we have a second ordinance for hearing and adoption, and I'll read it in its entirety. Twenty-six seventy-nine, dash twenty-two, dash zero-seven-one-eight, approving amendments to the lease with Hathaway Solo LLC, contract developer for two leases with affiliated entities of Hathaway Solo LLC. The property known as Tax Block One Twenty-four, portions of lots one and twenty-one located in the Langford redevelopment area, pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, NJSA forty A, colon, there's twelve A, there's one ETSQ for Solo Project. Need a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
Council members Graham O'Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yeah.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
It's a public hearing on this, on this ordinance, any questions, comments? There are none, motion to close the call.
So move.
Second.
Council members Graham O'Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Motion for adoption.
So move.
Second.
Welcome.
Council members Graham O'Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
We have the open public meeting portion, I need a motion to open public.
So move.
Second. Council members Graham O'Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Public hearing, questions, comments? Welcome back.
Yeah, Brian Gallagher, seven Fairmont Avenue. Um, just a quick question, statement, um, Station Road, I understand you bonded for, uh, the, the building of Station Road from two oh six to the, uh, to the, uh, train station.
Yes.
Discussions with the county to make it county road. That was one of the early considerations that we had been discussing. It's ideal, it's an ideal candidate for a county road, and before you execute the bond, uh, to bond through the improvement authority, I would suggest you take a look at that, and don't say, don't take no for an answer from the county. It's, it's a perfect county road, it connects a state highway with a regional transport location. We can determine based upon ridership where the riders are coming from, they're not all coming from Somerville, they're coming regionally. Therefore, it should be a county road, make the county pay for that road, don't pay for it. Hold the brakes on this a little bit, and push it off to them, go to them, they're going to tell you no first blush. Oh, we can't do that, we have to bond for it, well, yeah, you do have to bond for it, let them bond for it. Saves you, what is it, one point two, one point something? Or is it more than that?
Whatever, five percent of five, yeah, twenty-five.
Let them pay for it, don't put it on their back, but that, that's definitely a county road. And they'll say it doesn't connect, uh, to main arteries, it doesn't, it does. The other artery is a regional transport system, which the county, under their plan, their master plan, is encouraging that kind of road. Put their money where they're not, just make them pay for it.
Thank you. More public comment or question? Motion to vote.
So move.
Second. Council members Graham O'Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yeah, we have a series of consent resolutions, I would like to pull, um, two fifty-one, two fifty-seven, anyone else? Okay, all right, so let me read these. Two forty-two, approving page redundant in lifeguard. Two forty-three, approving chapter one fifty-nine in the New Jersey Community Development Block Grant for the senior citizens facility U V life project. Two forty-four, authorizing sale of surplus borrow equipment. Two forty-five, another authorization of sale of surplus equipment. Two forty-six, rejecting all bits for the cleaning and TV of a twenty-seven inch interceptor line. Two forty-seven, approving section of New Jersey Volkswagen Club, the parking spaces in front of the courthouse on August twenty-sixth as part of cruiser night. Two forty-eight, resolution of the borough of Somerville, authorize some local units' participation in pooled loan financing program of the Somerset County Improvement Authority. Two forty-nine, approving the street pair for October the second, from eleven to five on Main Street. Two fifty, approving the new record and towing license for, for the current year. Two fifty-two, uh, the landlord, Kelly Griffin, is hiring in a lifeguard. Two fifty-three, memorializing Megan Back to be hired as a pool supervisor. Two fifty-four, memorializing Kayla, with GeoSynTech for a project on Holly Glen Road. Two fifty-six, approving the reduction of performance bond and cash bond for Somerset Station for urban renewal. And two fifty-eight, authorizing bonds of five million two hundred thousand dollars for Station Road. Motion. So move. Second.
Council members Graham O'Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
All right, two fifty-one, awarding a contract to DeSantis Construction Inc. for Eastern State's Parkway, resurfacing on Madison Street in the amount of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, quarter and eighteen dollars and forty-six cents. So move.
Second.
I just had a quick comment on this, we're out there looking at the condition of this road, the water company did extensive work there, and our policy is that once the road is done, they surf, they resurface it curb to curb. Looking at the road conditions, it would have been unwise just to put new pavement over what exists there. It's, it may be original pavement in some cases, quite brutal. So we will accept, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, we'll accept an estro pavement from the water company.
We do accept that already.
We have already. So whatever they would have paid to resurface the road, will be enough, because we're going to have to basically reconstruct the entire, which will include hatch bases, drainage, curbing. It's, it's been very well torn up over the past few years, and unfortunately, it's a long road, and it's a wide road. So the estimates we have to do it right, and do it complete, is six fifty-seven. Kevin, you know roughly what the estro can be, maybe half of that?
About half of that.
Okay. All right, so that, that will be designed and done on our dime, and will apply the water company's contributions towards it, but it will be, it will be done, you know, you can't even walk across it without... Well, it's, it's, it was already on the list to be replaced, and then when the water company came through, it really, they finished you off. So I've got a lot of inquiries about it, this will put it in place. Kevin, you think this will get done this year, or you think this spring?
Oh, yeah, this year.
This year?
Yeah.
Good.
This is the construction contract.
Okay.
I, I do have a question, obviously, Eastern State's, you know, that road, you have Jefferson, which is a dead end going onto that road.
Row? So, well, Adams and Madison go in there, but I don't think Jefferson goes.
No, Je- Jefferson comes off the eastern end, and it's a double, double dead end.
So eight houses, four each.
Yeah. And I believe the row is also a double, is, is one dead end, if I'm not mistaken.
On the east side.
Yeah. And now, Madison, how far of Madison is this being done? Is it from, Madison's a full south end?
I would probably say post, probably post to...
South Madison?
I would say probably post to eastern.
Madison goes from post to four away.
Yeah, no, post to eastern.
Post to eastern. So these are the four Madison, these are all there. Doesn't even...
Okay. And did we look into possibility of Jefferson and Cadence Dead End Street, and as well as the other Dead End Street? That's what I had in mind.
I'm sure we did, and the problem, the problem with most of these things that comes down to the economic ability to do that, so, so this, this project was estimated a little higher than the original bids came in, which is rarely, but the, the money we have allocated is just over more than that project, so there was no ability to do other streets with this particular fund.
We can continue to solicit, you know, outside funds, because we've done Northwood...
You just, yeah, last meeting, you just applied for three grants.
So, you know, we, we can focus on that area, which is, you know, again, probably the forty's of tree homes, a lot of that's probably original pavement, so this, you know, this is the longest, widest street, we'll get this done, and then maybe we can start to focus on some of those arterial streets next to it. All right, roll call.
Council members Graham O'Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes. All right, the last one I have is two fifty-seven, accepting an award of two million five hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred dollars from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for Shumbers Park Improvement, grant number B two-two, dash CP, dash NJ, dash zero-five, eight A, motion. So move.
Second.
As, as Congressman, uh, Congresswoman Councilman, we mentioned before, this is the grant that our Congressman Thomanowski ushered through appropriations. I had a conversation with him last year, he said, you know, what do you need? And I, I probably rattled off ten different projects. This one caught his eye, we took a quick walk through it, he submitted ten projects for his congressional district, and this made its way to the final three, so I was very encouraged at that point. And one day, I, I don't remember where I was, but my, my phone rang, and, you know, caller ID was Washington DC, and I, I said, IRS is, you know, is calling me. It wasn't IRS, it was, it was the Congressman's office, it was in fact, it was him himself to say that he was able to get the project reported, so I don't have a timetable, we have the designs ready to go, and I'm just excited about...
Wednesday, Wednesday, myself, Kathy, Kate, and Rod, and we start training on how to implement this grant. So it starts Wednesday.
Hopefully, we'll push two million dollars...
Then we have a class of three weeks, again.
Hopefully, the training costs will not be two and a half million.
Well, we'll be doing that from our offices, so I, I think it's extensive, it's a lot of reporting, but it's a project, you know, it's a project that we've been looking for.
Kevin, I think those training courses in the Bahamas, okay? It's so much more fun.
But anyone that's been here for any length of time has, has, have no fond memories of Shumbers Park, from the pool, which was, which was the deepest pool in the town, and as soon as my kids got too old to walk on street and park avenue, we went down there, and, you know, a lot of, a lot of bad charity softball was playing on that field, and the old scoreboard from, from the pop order days is still there, hidden in the bushes, and I can't wait for whenever that day will come, that we can, not so much cut a ribbon as, as lighter barbecue, and, and bring that park to, you know, to where it always has been in memory, and have, have a grand reopening, and invite the Shumbers family to come back and, and see that park, you know, rededicated to, to a great community person. It would take us forever to cobble together state, you know, and see the beach and grant like, to cover that kind of cost, so I'm, I'm happy to accept this award on behalf of anyone who's ever played there, and for the, the kids that will play there in the future.
Yeah, if I may, I was one of those kids, I grew up, five, six years old, playing T-ball at that park, and then, you know, and later on, it became a pony league, and then softball leagues. Yep, and, you know, it, it's many fond memories, and I know a lot of residents in that area don't really have a park in sort of that side of town, and so that's, you know, it's very important to the residents in there, it's been a top concern for them.
It's not going to happen overnight, but if it's made be done right, and it's gonna...
This is, this is the big one, and the other bit of trivia is that that park is the first place I ever got stunned by a wash when I was six years old, so.
Let's approve it, and... And while I, and while I remember, Roger, if you would have a conversation with the Board of Ed, to see if there's any way we can get a real full-size baseball field as part of that, you know, down the road, I don't know if that's included in the design, but right now, we don't have a field, you know, in town, they go to Wygo Park, and they go to Torp.
The conference drawing shows the size, yeah, we did talk to the Board of Ed several years ago, but the problem with that facility is, it's still lies very well, so during baseball season, you have to get a lot of rain, too, so it does, it does, it may cause some problems, certainly, you could have that conversation.
Yeah, now that, now that we have, you know, where, well, let's at least have that discussion, because, you know, our, you know, our, our team's done well the last few years, it'd be nice to have a home, a true home field. All right, roll call.
Council members Graham O'Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes. Those are vouchers.
Yes, I, I moved in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-six cents in payments, bills and vouchers, I second that.
Council members Graham O'Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes. All right, before I quote for German, I want to thank council for tonight, longer than usual, but that's, you know, important topics, I appreciate your diligence, I appreciate